Something out of the blog that we do not have. I can't remember, it was like soy products or something. There was some small thing in there that was changed. And then she felt that we're applying for the funding. And it's also a new policy. Waste reductions are beautiful.
Any other questions for Dr. Larson on policies for additional information? Nine C, student wellness, sleep and school start times. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. I'm the chair of the board. I have a presentation that I'd like to share and then get more direction from the board as different things that we want to proceed with. So what we have here is very similar. It's the exact same PowerPoint that was made this afternoon, earlier this evening to the listening session about student wellness, sleep and school start times. One of the things that's really important is that where you get your information and so on, the Journal of Clinical Sleep Medicine position paper states that delaying middle school and high school start times promotes student health and performance. The school board has had student wellness as a goal for some time and has explored a whole host of things from the wellness policy about snacks and stuff like that that we looked at last year to chemical health and Minnesota student survey data and now school sleep time, school start time because of sleep. One of the things that the school districts cannot do is they cannot parent children and put them to bed. And so families are oftentimes concerned about students going to sleep at a certain time. We can't dictate or mandate that. We can't control over-scheduled students. We can't control, we can't put them to bed earlier. We can't take away their cell phones at night and those type of things. But the school district can do some things that will benefit student sleep and student wellness through sleep. And one of them is to change school start times at the secondary level. This has been something that's been going on for quite some time. We've talked about it since August of 2016 and here we are now in November of 2017, so over a year. We've also talked with other school districts and have gone to several sleep presentations throughout the metro area. And these are some of the things that we've done in terms of communication and in terms of things that the school board has also looked at. Right now where we are is that we've had the executive summary. All these informations on the website. We've been listening sessions at each of the school sites from early childhood and the middle school and high school and Wildwood and OH PTO presentation. And then we had our second listening session tonight. And the school board is to act in December of 2017. A lot of research finding, and the research strongly supports later school start time for adolescents. When you look at some of the documentation, one of the articles is from the University of Kentucky from nineteen, or from 2015, excuse me. They cite 26 studies about the need for adolescents to get more sleep. They researched both later and earlier start times, and the evidence was conclusive that later starts benefit adolescents. The same study, though, also concludes with this about elementary students. Our findings indicate that early school start times may be just as detrimental for young children as they are for adolescents. So you can go too early. The National Sleep Foundation has examined elementary students changing their school start times from 7:10 to 7:45 a.m. and they've stated, in summary, a change to earlier school start time did not decrease the total amount of sleep rate reported by elementary school students. And this is a self-reported survey, student study. There is not a lot of research out there on elementary school start times and elementary sleep. There's quite a bit on adolescents because adolescents, as people know, the brain development, the prefrontal cortex, all that type of thing is quite, a lot is happening at that time. And so it's a much more robust field for research. There are a lot of things that we've considered, one of which is student wellness. And the key thing is that the school board has a responsibility to examine things from educational trends, how we use technology, how we are going to use computers, how we're going to examine curriculum and how we're going to deal with student wellness. And so this is a topic that we should be looking at, and I'm glad that we are. Insufficient sleep is associated with reduced academic performance, depressed moods, increased emotional outbursts, and it's more likely to, a student who's sleep deprived is also more likely to use tobacco, alcohol and drugs. And this comes from Kayla Walstrom and also the Minnesota Sleep Society has also cited that. We've looked at other school districts around us in terms of what they're doing and why. Wayzata, Buffalo, Mounzou and St. Paul are the four most recent ones that have switched school start times. Largely, Mounzou did not change their middle school, but they did change their secondary schools and some elementaries. Wayzata still has three tiers. Buffalo does not. St. Paul has been bouncing all over the place. So, but we also compared not just what other school districts are doing, but also our athletic conference. We always use those schools as a comparison and neighboring school districts. There's 12 in all. And what we found is that at the elementary, five of the districts have elementary schools that start earlier than Madamidi, and Madamidi has the shortest school day of six hours and 20 minutes. None of the other elementaries have a shorter day. The middle schools, eight of them start earlier, three start later, and one starts at eight o'clock, just as we do. Eight of the school districts have a longer school day, four of the same, and none have a shorter school day than our six hour and 30 minute school day. At the high school, we find that six start earlier, four start later and two start at eight o'clock. Seven of them have a longer school day, four of the same school day, and none have a shorter day. The reason why the numbers don't quite add up is because Hillmore and St. Thomas, our school districts, only have high schools. They don't have the elementary program as part of that, and they weren't part of our looking at studies. We also examined the legal requirements. Now, the state of Minnesota mandates a total number of hours of instructional time for kindergarten, grades one through five and grade six, and then seven and 12. In kindergarten, we're over by 155 hours over the minimum. And grades one through five were 88 hours over. Grade six is 97 hours over the minimum. But grades seven and 12 are only 12 hours over the minimum, and that's pretty close. We have had people come back from staff development days in the event of a lot of snow days or cold days, that type of thing. We've also looked at adding 10 minutes to the secondary school day. That would create a buffer of about 40 hours, and it could also possibly provide some staff development opportunities. So that's one of the things that we've spent time looking at as well. Much of the time, though, has been spent on transportation. We gathered information from the Minnesota Central and the CISO, Center for Efficient School Operations. We have 18 bus routes, and the cost is approximately $55,000 annually per bus for secondary ridership. There is no morning route that is more than one hour long, and there's only one that's between 50 and 60 minutes. And there's also same with the afternoon routes. None is more than one hour long. But we attribute this to the fact that students are driving at the secondary level. And if you're going to ride on the bus, then it's more likely that you'll be trying to drive or get a ride with someone else. Elementary ridership, though, is different. We have two morning buses and four afternoon buses that are more than 60 minutes in length, the bus ride, for some students. And I just want to be clear that it's some students. It's not that a whole, not everyone gets, all 68 people get on the bus at one time and they ride for an hour. It's the first people that get picked up and so forth. But it is a long ride and it makes for a long day for students, both in the morning and then at the end of the day. We have nine morning and seven afternoon bus runs that are 50 to 60 minutes in length. So we've looked at that. Also with transportation, there's a lot to do about those cost scenarios. If we had one bus tier instead of two, the estimation is of an additional $80,000, and this comes from CISO and Central Minnesota. And part of the rationale on that is that you do not have any economies of scale savings by having the same bus drivers do two bus routes. You have to hire a whole new crew. You have to maintain that many more buses, and you have to store them and all that type of thing. Two service, district service providers would be an additional cost of about $700,000. And that, we have not gone out for bids on that, and our information comes to us from CISO and Minnesota Central. We've also looked at flipping the secondary and the elementary and adding time to the secondary school day. If we were to add time to secondary school day of 10 minutes, as I said earlier on, that would add about approximately $145,000. And this would be due largely to extended driver time. So it would be a cost on that if we added time. If we compress the time between the tier one and tier two, as I mentioned, we have two morning buses and four afternoon buses that are more than 60 minutes in length. If we wanted to compress the time so that we wouldn't have that hour-long or gap in between, we could do that. We would have to add five more buses, and that would bring the time down between the first tier starting school and the second tier starting schools. But it would be about $330,000 for five additional buses. We also looked at getting vans for elementary students. And so a van then would go and pick out some of those farther outlying school districts, some of those farther outlying schools, students on the outer parts of the district. The cost is $80 per day, and we estimated that we would need at least five vans to pick up and drop off the students who have the longest bus ride. The cost would be about $400 per day then, 80 times five is 400, and we'd have to pay an additional expense of about $68,000. But these are just estimates. They have not exactly run all of the numbers yet on that. But transportation certainly is a key, and it is a big issue that we need to figure out if it's any change that we want to do. And then finally, the most important piece about it is the impacts that would have. We've looked a lot at the impacts on students and about their after-school activities. That's something that we hear about quite often, the after-school activities that students are involved in. And we have a lot of different things that are going on. And one of the concerns that's been mentioned often was about what happens if we have students who are involved in activities and they get pulled out of school early. In the fall, we've had early, students leave school early. Girls tennis team left six times early. So if school were to be extended an hour, they would lose another hour of instruction at least six times during the year. This doesn't include state tournaments. Cross-country team has five meets in which students leave early. Most of the meets start at four o'clock. If we were to extend that time back, then students very likely would have to be out a little bit earlier, and that means the cross-country students would miss a potential five hours of instruction. As I mentioned, this doesn't include the state tournaments. Like, for example, the girl soccer team that Emma made reference to, they played during the day, and we don't count that. In the winter, there would not, no students leaving early for 2016-17. However, that's the fact of what happened. But with Nordic skiing, there is quite likely the possibility that students may have to leave early for either for meets or for practices, sometimes with sun setting as early as it is. We also looked at the spring sports. Boys and girls golf, there were 12 matches in which students left early, and if school time were to be extended, then the boys and girls would lose another hour 12 times. Track and field, there were five meets that students left early for, and again, it would be the same thing. Softball, there were two games. Baseball, there were two games. But lacrosse, there was none. And that's at the high school level. At the middle school level, cross-country and track and field, that has 205 people participating in it. Cross-country, there's 75 students at the, and the middle school are involved in cross-country, and those students may have to miss school early for different meets. Track, 130 students that were in it last year, and the same thing for them. It would probably be an hour or so. But that's just part of the athletic piece. There's another whole piece of it about associations. And the athletic associations, I looked at last year's, Kathy Wieland was able to gather the data for me, and we looked at things from flag football and lacrosse and soccer and all of those type of things. And the impact on those would be rather minimal because of the, they'd be outside. But during the indoor seasons for youth basketball, volleyball, gymnastics and wrestling, we would have students that would be impacted by that. Our youth basketball for grades one through eight had 555 players. They're both boys and girls. This goes from October to March. And some of those students practice right now at eight or nine o'clock, and there'd be a fight for gym time, which would make it even later for some students potentially. We have a high school rec program for grades nine through 12. There are 71 players involved in that. And again, they would get the time of the gym based on the leftovers from the varsity and the high school sports. In volleyball, grades five through eight, we had 60 players participating, and Junior Olympics had 53. Again, volleyball is a fall sport, but it's indoor, and there would be some issues with gym space, and those practices could go later as well. We have pre-kindergarten and kindergarten gymnastics, which happens, and we have 84 students that participated in that. Grades one through five gymnastics, there were 280 students that were involved in that program. And so those students may end up also having later practices. I do not know if the gymnastics pre-K and 1-5 practice after the high school. I'm assuming that they do. I know the volleyball and basketball is like that. So I'm assuming that that would be the same thing. Wrestling, 24 students participate in wrestling, and again, the hours would have to be changed a little bit for that. As I mentioned, flag football, tackle football, very popular programs, but not something that I think is an issue right now. We've also done some looking at jobs and childcare. There are several students that at the secondary level who take care of their younger siblings, and if that were to be flipped, that would be an issue that families would have to wrestle with. And it could be potentially really difficult for families to figure out how to go about doing that. We also have students that have jobs after school, and this could be impacted if school's out an hour later. It would be difficult for the students to get to their job, and they may be less desirable to employers as well. One of the things that came up a lot at the listening session was about the MAC program and what that would, what a change in school start time could mean for that MAC. Currently, we have 195 students involved in the morning program, 116 at Wildwood and 79 at OH Anderson. If the school starts were to change, that almost certainly would drop. There'd probably be a lot less need for it. The afternoon has 200, 128 at Wildwood and 72 at OH Anderson. That would almost certainly increase. Right now, they're close to that capacity. They do not, they want to be at about 100 at each place. You can always find more space, but it requires you to do things that you may not want to do. You may, which may mean that you usurp a classroom and have students in there, but you don't want to take that from a teacher. But you can find space if you look hard enough. It's just not the best and most optimal thing to do. We have a waitlist right now at Wildwood. There's 15 students at Wildwood, and there's one at OH Anderson. The question came up about fees. They're $10.46 for students, about $400 a month is for families on that. It's difficult to predict. The assumption is that we would lose students in the morning, but we would add students in the afternoon. And that may create some space issues as to where they're going to find room for families, or for students at that point. The other thing that we've spent a lot of time on is the scenarios. And the school board had five scenarios. Bill Minazzi created a document that shows what those are. And they are flipping, compressing and pushing everybody back. And the flipping scenario starts with the secondary time at nine o'clock, then OH Anderson would start at 7:45 and Wildwood at 7:55. And you can just back that off from there. And so if you had a secondary start at 8:45, then OH Anderson would be 7:30 and Wildwood 7:40 and so forth. Compressing is a thing that we've talked about in terms of adding buses so that there's less time between the tier one bus run and the tier two bus run. If we were to compress and get that time down between the two schools to about 45 minutes, that would cost around $330,000. But we think that could get done. And so if the secondary were to start, say, at 8:30, then OH Anderson could start at 7:35 and Wildwood at 7:45. If the secondary started at 8:45, OH Anderson 7:50 and Wildwood eight o'clock and so on. This, however, would be an additional cost. We also looked at a possibility of pushing the time back. That would mean that the secondary might move back from eight to 8:30. That means OH Anderson would start at 9:35 and Wildwood at 9:45. So those are some of the options that we've talked about. The board has directed me to do other research, and I think I've answered some of the questions that have come up. And now I need to hear what other research you want to do or you want me to do as we get, continuing on this examination.
Yeah, I have a question, starting with the MAC numbers. And I know that Kathy Wieland sent me an email with you on it regarding some of the numbers. But I don't know if the whole board got that. And I'm wondering, I don't recall if she said exactly what the capacity would be and wondered if you happen to have that. And if not, if we could just make sure the rest of the board members get that. Because we want to know if there's even, what's the capacity that they could hold for MAC after school?
As I mentioned, you can always find space, but it's just not always the most optimal.
Okay.
So a teacher could, like, for example, at Wildwood, maybe you would take the art room as a place that students can go to. Right now, they go to the computer lab, the gym and the cafeteria. So you can do that, but you just, it's not ideal. The capacity, according to her email, is about 90 children per site. They're already over that at one of the schools. And so that's what she had said about capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
What is the cost on the pushback idea?
Um, that, yeah. There would probably be no cost. On that, because it would still be the two tiers of transportation, but then the students would start at the elementary significantly later. In terms of transportation, it's still two buses.
Another question. When you mentioned adding minutes at the secondary level, I, I don't quite follow why we're so far below other districts. Could you give me a little context with that and why we would maybe want to add the minutes? I know that's kind of a side subject to what we're talking about here, but when you, when you talk on it, I don't feel like I understand it in context.
The first one is that according to Tom Burr, he's the director of transportation of St. Paul School District, and Ireland Hedwig is the person that works with Minnesota Central. You want to have more time in the afternoon. And so a later school, if the schools were to flip and the high school were, and middle school would be extended by 10 minutes, that would give you more time for the bus runs to do that. Because more elementary students ride the bus than high school. And so you'd have a little bit more time, so you wouldn't have as many late buses or buses arriving late at the elementary school. From time to time, we still will have a bus that will arrive late to OH Anderson's aid. The second thing is that it would add some buffer to the school day. We're a district that doesn't have any late starts or early releases for professional development. As you, as you know, we're 12 hours, very close to cutting it, cutting it really tight. And so we want to have opportunities for staff to do some of the PLC work and some of the important work that they need to do. We need to find, figure out a creative way to look at finding time for that.
So if we made no change, is there still an option to add time at the secondary level, or is that not possible with the bus runs?
It's not possible with the bus, if, if the bus. Bus run stays where it is, right? If the school starts, if the school times stay as they are, secondary at eight o'clock. Adding time to the school day would not, would not get the buses from the high school to the, from the secondary schools to the elementary schools in time.
Because you can't add to the elementary level. Okay.
And the issue with adding at the elementary level is a contractual issue, how much time we can have, a lot of teacher contact.
And you couldn't add it during lunch or recess or some?
You, you might be able to add it. We already at Wildwood, we're at 40 minutes of lunch and recess, which is more than the contract requires. The idea being that we want to have students be more active, and so that makes sense. It's more difficult at OH Anderson for scheduling reasons, not for anything, just logistically.
Well, from the, this is a really question, but it's kind of a, but from the budget meeting tonight, the compress option or any option that would add cost to busing is really not an option. I mean, the budgetary constraints that we're going to see next year and the year after are breathtakingly scary. And so we just cannot, I think the bus thing about adding more cost to the busing, however that would look, I think is not an option for us. And the full board will hear the report on December 7th, which will highlight some of the budgetary concerns. I have questions on the childcare. Do we have any idea how many more people might want to use the PM section of MAC if there was going to be a flipped scenario? If we're going to do the flipped, the elementary going early and then the second, the middle school and high school going later? Do we have any idea how many more people we would have added to that, that PM?
We're expecting a lot more, but there's not a specific number. It's not like 18 or 38 or 100. We can ask people who are using the program right now and get some kind of anecdotal answer, but we've not conducted a poll and would you use it and so forth.
Right. I mean, it could be a lot, and to the point where we can, we do not, we would not have the capacity, you know, the idea about the spacing or whatever. But more importantly, the way I'm looking at it is the staffing component of that afternoon MAC, no longer would, students, students wouldn't be able to help in that scenario either because they're going to school later. So that, that is really a big scary for me is that childcare afternoon piece, because we just don't know. And I don't know how, if, again, if we could do a survey that would, would ask the question. But that, that one there keeps me awake at night, wondering what could happen.
Other question?
So if we're voting on this in December, will we just get to hear what, what the proposal is that you will propose to us at our December study session?
I think it's important that we come collectively to some kind of, you know, what do we want to do? If it's just something that you want me to do without board input on that, I can do that, but I don't think that's the best way to do things. I think that we should collectively discuss it. We have it scheduled for December 7th, see where we are. I do not want to put a proposal forward that will be divisive. I don't want to put a proposal forward that will create animosity or a lot of disagreements. I don't know if there is a, once you start down this road of looking at school start time, you will inevitably make some people angry. Some of the emails that we've all gotten, at least I think we've all gotten, have been very positive about making a switch. You need to do this. Why aren't you listening to the research? You know, some of that type of thing. We've also gotten some that have been very, you need to keep things the way they are. Aren't you listening to the community? We don't want this. So let's, you know, it's not, if we're looking for something that's going to make everybody happy, I don't think it exists.
Are you wanting more thoughts and comments from the board tonight or at the next study session or when do you want?
At any time. You know, if you have them now, I'm happy to get after it this next week and have it before the 7th, or the 7th becomes a quick turnaround on the 14th.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have some comments, not necessarily really anything that needs to be researched. I'm happy to share them if people want. Now, or do we think that we need to?
Are there comments we've discussed before, reiterating some of the conversation, or are they new ideas that we might want them all over and think about?
Yeah, I want to, well, I think so. So I did, I talked to a school board member in St. Paul, who's on the MSBA board, and so we had breakfast as a part of MSBA business. So I asked her, I said, hey, I said, you know, you guys have just done this. Tell me more. And then I also did, they have a section on the website, St. Paul Schools, that talks about this too. They started the journey in 2013, and the implementation phase is 2019. So they've been wrestling this for quite a long time. But one of the things, they have the luxury, as do some other districts, the luxury of a three-tiered bus system. Again, coming back to the fact we can't afford the three-tiered bus system. So what's going to happen in St. Paul, to my understanding, according to the website Anzuki, is that they are going to have their late start elementaries, will stay late start elementaries. Some of their elementaries that are mid-time will go early, and then the middle school and high school will go in between. But what will happen for them is the parents will be able to decide at a forum in 2018, they'll have the ability to say, the early time is really good for us. We're going to go with the early start school. Or the late start elementary is good for us. We're going to go that way. So what we're facing here, you know, potentially, obviously, there'll be some changes for people, but at least they'll have a little bit more say in what works for their family. And I talked to her about the childcare thing, and she said, this is really an area that they're worried about in St. Paul. And then I think that my last comment on this is the return on investment. Is the half hour that we're talking about pushing back the middle school and the high school worth changing pretty much everyone's schedule? And is it worth it? I mean, I think that's, if we distill this argument right down to its core, that's what we're talking about. So these are things that I have played over and over again in my head at night when I'm trying to get to sleep. And I don't have answers to, but I certainly am thinking about them. So if that is helpful in any way.
I just would be curious, and you don't have to answer right now, but we've had some thoughts in some of the emails or suggestions of looking at think outside the box type options. And, you know, I don't know if other school districts have done them or not, and we don't need to go into them all right now, but it is something I would be curious. It's kind of like the low-hanging fruit that we've asked for. What are some other things that might be options that we haven't thought of, that people suggested, and just would be curious as to your feedback on them? But you don't have to do it all right now.
No, the idea of using time has been something that the schools have struggled with mightily, and there's been a lot of work done on that very thing. And it's some pretty innovative things, lunch and learn and the win time for two examples, to try to relieve some student stress and provide opportunities for students to get caught up on work or have their needs met. Students that are struggling in reading or math. Students that are struggling in reading or math will go on their win time to that support, not losing any core curriculum. So we've looked at those type of things, and that's kind of thinking out of the box. It's difficult in terms of having, like, late starts because we're only 12 hours over the minimum, and so that really hamstrings us. That's why part of the issue, the interest that I have is extending the student day to provide some opportunities to do those type of things. So to answer your question, there's probably more that can be done.
So I have two things. Have we consulted with elementary schools who have the earlier start time, the 7:30 kinds of things, but not YZETTA? I mean, YZETTA is still in transitional kind of phase, but are there schools, maybe privates or charter schools or other publics that have that 7:30 a.m. start time for the elementary age? And if there's information that you can bring to the study session, that would be helpful from talking with them. We don't need to do that now. The other one is, I know at the high school listening session, Teri Trauman talked about increases in certain student behaviors. And if we could have that data to look at as well over time, would be, I think, helpful to the board as well.
Is it already being done? I mean, I know there's so much attention given to the wellness of the students. As far as outside of the box, like what Stacy was saying, maybe identifying, somehow identifying students that may need more sleep or something, and maybe designing a program or something outside of the box that way. And I know we've got already things going on, but, you know, I think it might be worthwhile to think of like a special thing or something where we can help identify those who may need it.
I think part of that goes back to the last study session, we had asked, did a more complete update on, we keep referring to as low-hanging fruit, which I don't like that term, I don't know what to call it at this point, because we all know what that means.
That's very low-hanging.
But, you know, it might fold into that report, Mark, as you look at those things, because some of those things will change and could be innovative in how they're addressed. And so we'd asked for that, the study session, and so I assume that's still coming for December 7th as well, is that complete look at that list again of where we are with implementation with those items.
And that was the list from January 5th last year.
Yeah. I just like, I kind of agree with what Kevin was commenting on too, about what he said about St. Paul, and then the overall question, is it worth it? You know, and I think that's something that kind of rung with me a little bit.
So how do you, Mark, to answer that?
No, no, I just.
Well, I mean, is it a cost-benefit analysis piece? I mean, how do you answer the question? I think it's a great question, but to hand it to Mark like that without some structure or framework is not very fair.
I don't think he was asking for feedback on it. He's just sharing.
And my preamble was, have a couple statements.
Yeah, yeah, so I just was, yeah. Yeah, and you made me wrestle with it too by saying that, so.
Just want to make sure that Mark has got what we're asking.
No question on Mark.
So at, when YZETTA switched, they did a childcare class the last hour of the day for some of the elementary students. And I know we no longer have a child development class, right, at the high school? And so, I mean, is that even something that's an option? To do something like YZETTA did for MAC?
I suppose it is, but students didn't register for it before, so it was eventually dropped from the first one.
So then, so then it's probably not an option, is what you're saying?
Very unlikely.
Okay. And I don't know how successful it is at YZETTA or anything like that, but, you know, it was, it was a headline the day that they switched. So, just curious.
If you think of anything else, please drop Dr. Larson an email, so he can have some time to gather any information you might be interested in for the study session on the 7th. Action items, 10A, approval of 2016-17 audit. Dr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
One second. Do you want to take a recess, Kevin? Do you have the audit, or you've heard the audit?
I've heard the audit.
Okay. I just want to make sure.